Okay, good evening and thank you for joining us on our Tuesday, April 5th Board of Education Meeting. Please join us in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll move right on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much. Good evening and thank you for joining us for our April 5th Board of Education Meeting. We are holding in-person meetings here in the Rye Middle School multipurpose room and for the time being, we are continuing to broadcast our meetings on YouTube live. As I mentioned at the last meeting, tomorrow through Friday, we'll be hosting a visit from the tri-state consortium, a team that will be looking at the professional learning taking place here in the district. They will observe in classrooms, sit in on professional learning sessions, and hold focus groups with members of our community. On their last day, they will share with us their insights, takeaways, and recommendations, and we will in turn share those with our faculty, administrators, staff, and greater community. Thank you to everyone from Rye who will be participating in the visit, in focus groups or classroom visits, and many thanks for our visiting team for taking the time out of their homeschool districts to help us and give feedback. Kudos to Dr. Murray and the Rye Steering Committee for their efforts in organizing and planning the visit. It is an incredible task putting it together. I know the board all had a chance to see the schedule, and Tricia and the team have been working on that for months since the start of, actually since when Tricia started in July, working on this plan. So, we've had a team behind the scenes working with Tricia and getting ready, and we're really excited. It will be an incredible opportunity to hear some feedback on the work we've been doing these last five years in terms of professional learning. So, I'm pleased to announce that the 2022-2023 School District Budget Roadshow is underway. On March 25th, I held an online meeting with the members of Rye Rotary. They enjoyed the talk, or at least they said they did to me, maybe as a fellow Rotarian, they didn't want to insult me, and they asked some great questions and actually gave some suggestions. On Thursday, I'll be headed to the Osborne with some members of the board, not to be confused with the Osborne School, I'll be there later on, but to present to the residents there. And as a sweetener, I'll be bringing along some of the Rye High School students from Rhythm on Rye who will perform as the opener for the budget presentation, and that will be very exciting. In fact, we'll be going in a couple of weeks to Rye Rec to meet with the senior group and present there, and we will have high school students and Midland students who will be performing at Rye Rec. But the Osborne home always gives us a warm welcome. We love seeing the residents, and many of the residents, as I've learned over the years, were teachers, were Board of Education trustees, and have grandchildren in our schools. The week after the break, I'll be headed to Community Synagogue and the Rye Middle School PO meeting, and there are many more roadshow meetings planned for the last week of April and into May. Our COVID case numbers continue to reflect the current case numbers in the community. We've had 26 reported cases in the district since our last board meeting on March 22nd. Last weekend, Rye Middle School successfully presented Annie to the community. Congratulations to the cast and crew, along with all the volunteers who made the performance a huge success. And finally, a brief note about the middle school, high school social two Fridays ago. As you may recall, this was the first in-person social for middle and high school parents since January of 2020. I just wanted to report, there was an incredible turnout at the event. Parents were very generous with their giving, and the parent organizers tell us they more than doubled the amount they were anticipating raising for the event. And thanks to Suzanne and Joe who joined and were there for the evening, it was just a nice, a nice place to be, and lots of wonderful feedback and great compliments from the parent community on all of the efforts of the district over these last few years. And as this is our last meeting before spring recess, I'd like to wish everyone a restful and relaxing week, a happy Passover and Easter to those who are celebrating. And this concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you very much. So, since I know the next very exciting thing on the agenda is to discuss our social-emotional learning initiatives, we'll just move right forward to that. So, who do I turn it over to first?
To Tricia.
Okay.
Hello, good evening. Erin Friedenberg and I will be presenting on our K-12 social-emotional learning program. And we're also joined by Rosie Bracca Deta, our elementary school counselor, and Charlie Cipriano, one of our high school counselors. And they're going to be adding to our discussion tonight and helping to answer any questions that you may have. Erin and I are going to be giving an overview of what we offer in terms of SCL across our district and the thinking that we're doing right now for the coming years. One of our goals of the Rye commitment is to foster socially responsible, caring citizens. And in order to accomplish that, they need to be able to have a firm understanding of themselves, relate well to others, build positive relationships, and social awareness. And really, learning those social-emotional skills lay the foundation for that. So, in everything that we do, in our academics and the climate that we create, we think about how do we best embed those skills throughout the day. And as a resource, we often use when thinking about the SCL competencies that are necessary for students to learn, is this framework by the Collaborative for Academic Social and Emotional Learning, or CASL. This is called the CASL Wheel. And this framework outlines the knowledge, skills, and attitudes across five areas of social-emotional competence. The Wheel defines self-management as managing emotions, stress management, and setting personal goals. As far as responsible decision-making goes, we teach students to be curious, open-minded, make reasoned judgments, and evaluate consequences of their actions. For relationship skills, we teach students to communicate effectively, collaborate, and build positive relationships with peers. Social awareness, meaning taking others' perspectives, building empathy, and treating others with kindness. And self-awareness, instilling a sense of self-efficacy, a growth mindset, and identifying emotions and personal assets. And the Wheel, the CASL Wheel establishes four key settings that support SCL. One setting is the classroom, where that's our opportunity to have really explicit SCL instruction for students, and to build a positive classroom climate. Schools across the school, we have the opportunity to create a positive school culture through our practices and our policies. And then, we also have the opportunity to build authentic partnerships with families and caregivers so they really understand what we're trying to do within the school so they can support that work at home. And then, within the community, we have an opportunity to align our learning with our community-based organizations, for example, the work that we do with the Rye Youth Council and Rye Act. So, previously, we've given, we've presented to you on our multi-tiered system of supports. We've talked to you about the three tiers of a program we put in place for students. And before, we've really focused on the academic tiers that we have and the different ways that we support students, but we also use that MTSS system for social-emotional learning as well. So, in the first tier, we talk about what our Tier 1 program is for SCL. That's our program that's available to all of our students. All of our students have access to it. For our second tier, that's targeted SCL interventions for students who demonstrate a need. So, for those students who have had the Tier 1 program and they still are in need of some additional support, maybe struggling in a certain area, certain SCL competencies, we might put them in a small group to work with a counselor or school psychologist. And then, students who demonstrate even a further need, need something more intensive, would go to a Tier 3 support. So, we'll look at what that looks like at an elementary level. So, our Tier 1 SCL program for all of our elementary students, the first thing our youngest students participate in is something called Kelso's Choice. That's actually taught by Rosie. She's got the frog over there. There's Kelso. Do we have a prop? So, Kelso's Choice is given to our kindergarten, first, and second grade students, and Rosie pushes into those classrooms and teaches those lessons. It's about 10 lessons per year, and the lessons really focus on conflict resolution, the relationship skills part of that CASL Wheel. And she also brings in other SCL competencies as well. Once they get to third and fourth grade, they participate in our health, our health SCL lessons with one of the instructors from the Rye Youth Council. We work with Jessica Ladato, and she focuses in third grade on empathy, conflict resolution, gratitude, and managing emotions. And in fourth grade, self-esteem, peer pressure, getting along well with others, and handling stress. And then, all of our elementary students also have access to a school counselor. The Tier 2 level at the elementary school, again, those are students who have been through that Tier 1 program, they need some additional support. We provide that in small groups. One way is through our Effective School Solutions Clinician, our ESS Clinician that we have in the district. She runs small groups on those same SCL competencies. We also have our elementary students participating in what we call Lunch Bunch, which is a social skills group facilitated by Rosie as well. And then, in addition to that, again, if kids still need more support, they can be seen one-to-one by a school counselor or a psychologist.
How do, for like Tier 2 and Tier 3, what's the process by which students are selected and such?
Yep. So, before I've discussed our MTSS process, so if we feel like the student needs more support, you would refer to the MCSS team. They would look to see what interventions have been done so far, and they would make recommendations. Usually, you always have to go from the Tier 1 to the Tier 2. You would never go directly to a Tier 3. You want to make sure you exhaust all your support and resources at one level before you move on to the next.
The Tier 1's everybody, right?
Yes.
Okay. But you have to, I mean, I know you said that too. You said sort of when they've gone through a Tier 1, but I guess what I'm confused, it sounds like Tier 1 is sort of continuous throughout, you know, it's a series of lessons throughout the year.
Right.
If you saw a kid that needed something more, you wouldn't wait till those finished, right?
Correct. So, sometimes you can have, you can do additional supports within the classroom, right? That might be something we might try, some sort of individual plan for a student. But some, and it really depends, and it's kind of on a case-by-case basis, but if they do need that additional support, we probably would recommend a group.
And at this age, how, trying to think of the right word, but I'll say transparent, is it to the child themselves? Like, are they aware that something sort of additional is going on for them relative to others or not, or it varies, or?
That would probably depend. Rosie, do you want to answer that?
So, as the kids get older, like, if you go to grades 3 through 5, they have more self-awareness and social awareness to see certain kids who might be leaving the class or who are getting pulled for different services. So, some kids are aware of that and want to keep it more discreet, and I talk with the parents, and they say that, and that's not a problem. So, they just kind of come to my room all by themselves, and so it's a little bit more discreet, something they're more comfortable with. The K-2 kids, I don't see as much of that awareness of like how others might be noticing what they're doing or where they're going, and I think that they're, I've seen kind of be more open initially with like feeling sad or feeling worried in their emotions because they're not, they're not feeling too shy in front of others at that point. So, K-2 and 3 through 5, you see a bit of a difference.
As the parent of a current third grader, I can self-atest that the awareness of what everyone else is doing and chatting about it definitely starts in third grade.
And Tricia, just one thing I just want to clarify, so, and based on Tom's question, so if the Tier 1 pieces are happening continuously.
Yes.
If someone's referred to additional support, they're not pulled out of Tier 1, they are just, that's in addition.
No, they continue in the Tier 1 program, it's in addition to.
I wanted to make sure, yeah, I wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yes, it's in addition to. So, here, I just want to give you an example so you can see the type of work that Rosie's doing with our youngest students. So, she's, this is right before she's starting one of her Kelso's Choice lessons, and she's teaching them an emotional regulation strategy.
I'm using my belly breath. I'm not touching my belly, but I'm using my belly breath as I trace my finger up and trace my finger down. As you trace your finger up, you're breathing in your nose and filling your belly with air, with that belly breath, and as you're tracing your finger down, you're breathing out slowly. All right, that's an excellent calming strategy you can try in addition to the others we mentioned for weight and cool-off. Excellent job.
So, just to give you a little bit insight into the work that she does, always good time.
And we also have our Tier Support MTSS model as well at the middle school. So, the middle school program, as everyone knows, has the team structures, and they have their team meetings ongoing, so that's a Tier 1 support that all students have access and helps to support all the students' social-emotional needs. In addition, with the Habits of Mind class that we've spoken about many times, those students are learning DBT Steps A program. That's the dialectical behavioral therapy that is taught by Jessica Ladato. She works through those lessons within that class. Some of the topics that they go over include self-regulation, distress tolerance, and mindfulness. In addition, in that class, there are some executive functioning skills and other supports which really helps to support just the overall learner. In addition, the counselors push into the classrooms throughout the school year typically at least four times a year, sometimes it's more depending on what's going on in a specific grade, or sometimes within a class or on a specific team. There's a lot of different things that they will go into the class to speak about. Some of the things include wellness, self-awareness, relationships, making good decisions, managing stress, social awareness, all things aligned to the first slide of all the different competencies. But that really is tailored based upon the needs of what the students are requiring. And then, in addition, all of our students have access to the school counselor. And when you're assigned your counselor in 6th grade, that counselor stays with you through 6th grade, 7th grade, and 8th grade. That's where there's some continuity so that that will support the students' social-emotional learning during a variety of different times, or if there's different things that do occur. Tier 2, as we've already spoken about, is really more targeted. It's for those who demonstrate a higher need than what's just provided just within the classroom or to all students. So, again, all students continue to receive the Tier 2 supports, but we've identified some students who require additional supports. We've spoken a lot about our ESS clinicians, so there is one at the middle school, and she provides Tier 2 supports. What this looks like is could be individual counseling, could be group counseling, and also involves a family component as well. So, if a child's struggling within school, they'll get some more intensive support through one of, through our ESS clinician, and then if there's some outside supports that are needed, she can help to facilitate that as well. Additionally, there is small groups facilitated by whether it be the school social worker. Our school counselors also provide those groups as well. Sometimes those are just for Tier 1 students, that if there's a group or, you know, students are interested in meeting together and need some facilitation, that certainly can happen, but then there's more targeted topics that are provided for Tier 2. Again, that really depends on what the needs of the students are. So, it's really based upon if there's a couple of students that have a similar need such as managing stress or anxiety, or maybe they've experienced something, the counselor can pull a small group together and they'll work on that for a period of time.
How many students do we have taking advantage of us?
So, great question. So, I could give you those numbers.
Fantastic.
Didn't think you'd ask. So.
Really?
So, for ESS, she actually currently has a caseload of 13 students that she's worked with this year. She has three pending referrals. Four students that she's worked with have been discharged because this isn't long-term, it's more short-term cyclical, usually six to eight weeks, and then five students that declined the service, just to give you a roundabout. Typically, for Tier 2 supports, the clinician will have anywhere between 15 to 20 students at any given time, but that can change depending on need, and then as students are doing well or work through a cycle, they might drop off or drop just into the Tier 2, back into Tier 2 supports.
And then, Tier 3?
So, Tier 3 is much less than that. So, I would say at this point, so I'm going to move into that so I could help you understand that. So, for Tier 3, currently, our ESS workers are not providing Tier 3 supports, they're providing more of our Tier 2 supports. So, we recognized the need to provide additional supports based upon the pandemic and COVID, and obviously rightfully so. So, they really have helped us to support those higher-level Tier 2, which there is a bigger increase. Our Tier 3 most intensive supports currently are being supported by either our school social worker or school counselor. That looks like more intensive or more frequent one-on-one counseling. Typically, that's not so much group work that's happening, it's much more intensive. And then, we've also developed DBT, school-based DBT groups as well. So, Steps A is more of a Tier 3 general curriculum for all students, and then the school-based DBT includes individual counseling, group counseling, coaching throughout the school day as a child requires it, and then we have a bimonthly consultation that we have that works with CBC of Westchester. They come in spearheaded by Dr. Alec Miller, so we have a clinician that comes in and works with our school psychologists and to support those students. So, in those groups, I believe that I think we're up to six or seven kids at this point that we've identified require that high level of intensive support.
And just to follow up on that, in terms of the numbers for elementary and high school for, you know, like Tier 2, Tier 3 support?
Sure. So, for the Tier 2 support for ESS at elementary, currently, she's seeing 16 students. Three have declined, two have been discharged. She runs, currently she has one group that's running, but she has also done 29 classroom lessons, and that's over the three elementary schools. I'm going to get into the high school.
And then, just one other, you'd made a reference with the middle school in terms of the child decline. Does the child make the call, the parents make the call, it's child and parents?
It depends. So, we really, if we've identified a student that requires some additional support, sometimes parents will choose to provide that support outside of the school rather than accessing supports that we can provide in the school. So, it's still important for us to be connected with that outside provider or stay connected, so that happens often. I would say typically, it's more the parent or the guardian as opposed to a child saying, "No, thank you," because then we would really work with that student and the parents to say, you know, what, just so we can help them understand the benefit of it.
But sometimes is it, I guess, is the student approached first sometimes independent of the parent, or it always would start?
Not typically. So, typically, the parent would be, is an integral part of that, so they're aware of that. Sometimes at high school, that's a little bit different, where we might work with the student first and then we'll bring the parent onboard, but in middle school, certainly, that's a partnership.
And Erin, could you just speak a little bit to, you talked about that there is a family component to that Tier 2 support. Could you just talk a little bit about what that means and what it looks like?
Sure. So, that is actually a nice component that we've had because of ESS, because their caseload is not as high as our school counselors. It depends on where the child is and what the need is, but typically, it's touching base with the parents at least once a week. Sometimes it can, you know, be reduced to every other week, but really, it's ongoing communication with the family to make sure that the support that they're getting in school and also to hear about what's happening outside of school and how we can partner together to support the child in both settings.
Great.
Thank you. Great. So, at the high school, we also have the three, the various tiers as well. So, all students are receiving the wellness lessons in PE in 9th grade, and so this includes self-reflection and self-awareness, mindfulness activities, and really developing lifelong pattern of wellness for each of the students. Additionally, we've spoken a lot about managing your future in 11th grade and how we've really changed that curriculum where it's not just focused with college, and you're going to learn a little bit more about that, so more to come in the next slide. And then, we also have the individual student counselor meeting. So, every student meets with their counselor at least once per, every school year, so that's 9th through 12th grade. So, each of the counselors meet with each student.
Erin, before we move on from Tier 1.
Sure.
For the wellness lessons in 9th grade, can you talk about maybe how much time is committed in PE to those lessons and then sort of thinking through if that would ever be expanded to be offered maybe every year, just to reinforce some of these really important, you know, initiatives?
Sure. So, I think that with Susan Delaire-Reed and Suzanne Short as the principal, we're really working on kind of developing that out throughout and having that be what we do within the curriculum. So, it's really hard to say that there is five or 10 minutes associated to that. It really depends on what they're working on, what the day looks like, what the lesson allows for, but it's certainly something that is beginning in 9th grade, and certainly, I'm sure we're going to have more discussions about how that can be integrated throughout all PE classes. For the high school, we also have the same Tier 2 supports that I've spoken about, and that's with ESS. We also have a clinician at the high school, and so to give you the numbers of students that she's currently working with, currently, she has eight students. Six students have been discharged, eight students have declined that service, and we also have two students that we might consider for Tier 3 support. So, though for ESS, we have brought them onboard this year. For Tier 2 support, we are going to be moving forward with them for next year. You will hear a little bit about that for more of Tier 3 supports. So, there's some students that we might have that support start a little bit sooner in May and June so that we can really hit the ground running with them starting for next year. So, you'll see that in Tier 3, that students are supported one-on-one by the clinician, and this, the same type of support. So, it's individual. At Tier 3, they also do include group if there's an appropriate group, and ESS will facilitate that, and then they also will work with outside providers, parents, and any teachers as well. Sorry. That's okay. And then, just that there's, we also have the DBT groups that are happening in the middle school, also happening in the high school. So, I believe it's the same number of students that we're supporting there that are getting the individual group. They have coaching as well, and then they also meet, have the consultation twice a month as well.
Erin, I'm sure, I know we've covered this in other meetings, but just to kind of refresh people's memories, you know, obviously, DBT is a very strong component of all these programs. Can you give us a sense of like what makes, what made that the most appropriate choice for using in the school setting for all of these different grade levels?
Sure. So, I think that more recently, DBT research will show that that really has been proven effective in terms of therapy for students, that it really gives them the tools that students need to have the self-regulation, to make better decisions for themselves, their specific strategies. So, that's kind of one of the most intensive level of therapy they can get outside of school. So, now that it has been adapted for schools, I think that we've really seen it to be effective across the board, and there's different levels of intensity that we can provide that for our students. But really, understanding, so the dialectical behavioral therapy, really what it is, is that, you know, it's really understanding that there's no right or wrong, there's kind of this middle path, and so there is value in everyone, both opinions or any situation that you're dealing with, which is really helpful just as a learner and taking care of your social-emotional needs. So, the strategies really have been proven to be effective in some of those higher-risk students, and so the fact that we can provide strategies to everyone at a Tier 1 level, I think, long-term, is appropriate. The other thing that's really helpful is it gives common language that not only students are using, that teachers can use, administrators. So, as we're training staff in this, when we went through the four-day intensive training, administrators were trained, counselors were trained, all of our mental health staff, so that there's that common language and understanding of how we can best support our students.
Great. Like, it sounds like a combination of lots of really practical skill-building and having that ability to have very clear communication, which, you know, I think for anyone who has an adolescent knows, those are pretty key pieces to.
Absolutely.
To life.
Absolutely. Yes.
So, great, thank you.
And so, this is just a short clip of an example of what the 11th graders will experience in a Managing Your Future course led by the school counselors.
To give you a few highlights, I'll start with our first lesson, which we start with each year. each year, which is an exploration of self-identity where students complete a heart map. Here are some examples of our student heart maps, which they develop on their first day of class, and this helps to guide them as we go throughout the rest of the semester. Each one is unique, creative, and expresses what is important to each student in their life. And again, this is something we will refer back to as we go through each lesson in this course. They also complete a values assessment where they get to identify certain values that are important to them, their family, and as they plan for their goals after high school. These are the topics that we cover from week to week. Students meet once a week in Managing Your Future with a different counselor each week covering a different topic. With the newly redeveloped curriculum, all of these are intentional and build upon each other as we go throughout the semester. As an example, right now, our juniors are working on their resume workshop. Here's Ms. Bradley walking students through some strengths and pros and cons of resumes and how students can better portray who they are, their strengths, their interests, as they apply for either part-time work or summer jobs. Students work together in class on interactive projects. And in this lesson, students will evaluate and look at different types of resumes and help figure out how they can express their own personality, strengths, and interests in a unique resume. Students collaborate and work with a different counselor each week. And at the end of this class, students will have a resume as a part of their portfolio should they need it for part-time work or summer jobs. As an experiential piece of this lesson, students are able to participate in mock interview evenings that are occurring this week and next week with the help of our parent volunteers. Students can come in with a resume and go through a practice interview and not only practice, but also get feedback on how they did. This helps students' confidence, their growth, and to be better prepared as they go throughout life in the next few months and next few years. I hope you enjoyed that overall perspective on what Managing Your Future now looks like. And again, this is our overall course objective that we remind students we are focusing on each week as we go throughout the course. Thank you.
And just a special thank you.
To give you a few highlights, I'll start with.
Sorry, sorry. Sorry. Okay.
Jim O'Hara, who is the director of guidance who helped us in making that video. And Charlie, I don't know if you want to just add to that to give us a little bit more light into that course, because I know you've been teaching it.
Sure. So I think the overall objective is for the students to understand before they know where they want to go, it's important to understand like where they came from and who they are. All right? So that's like goal-setting, reflecting, and just understanding their values and what's important to them. So lesson one, as Mr. O'Hara said there, everything is tied into each other each lesson. But lesson one is definitely the foundation for it because through that heart map, they're allowed to think about what is important and really sit back. And a way of being mindful is getting it all on a piece of paper, and it's just fun for them. They really enjoy doing that. And so through that, that's lesson one. Then lesson two, Mr. O'Hara was in there, and that's really, they do a values assessment there. So again, just thinking back on what they did week one, where they were able to illustrate and kind of write that all down in a fun way, now they're going to do a values assessment and kind of look to see, again, what is important. Lesson three was Mr. Renner, and that was about let your life speak. That's, that's the assignment there. And there, the objective is to think about three to five experiences in their life that have really made an impact on them. And from that, they want to choose one that they could really focus in on and start writing about. Lesson four is actually what I taught, and that's a personal essay. So there, now students can take one of those, or two of those ideas and really start jotting those down and start making a little bit of, I'm blanking out the word, but like just an outline really for their, their personal essay. And from there, they really started going in depth. One thing that I loved about it too is we got to look at some different types of essays that were out there, personal essays from college-level students, but all, all types of students. And we partnered them up, and they're able to talk about different essays and what really stood out and, you know, really what makes an impact. Then as you move forward, again, every single class that we've done, we've tried to implement mindfulness the first five to 10 minutes there. So we did that in different ways. Mr. Meyer was incredible by just doing a recording there, so that was an audio one, just talking about five minutes of just getting them grounded, them to breathe, relax, and just, you know, just listen and just calm them down. Second week, Mr. Renner gave him some resources like the COMAT headspace. And there, he was able to show, and it's really nice because it has a nice lake in the background, so it gets him really calmed down. But they're just listening. And again, it's for them to just work on their breathing and just relax. And mind, for my lesson, I actually used something called four-square breathing. It was very simple, and I think this is a tool that you can use at any point in time. That's before a performance, before a game, before a test. Simply just take a deep breath in for four seconds, hold it for four seconds, release it for four seconds, relax for four seconds. I think that's one that can keep, a great tool that anyone can use at any time. So by those three classes, just giving them different tools that they could work on, to work on stress, stress management, goes a long way. And just kind of again, starting it and keeping that consistent, I think it just allows them to start thinking about their feelings and give them a moment to reflect a little bit before they jump into the lesson. So as they do that, it grounds them, they can start thinking again about what's important to their life, and they can start writing. And then as that, you go into the resume building, which is what we just finished now this past week, was again, they're taking everything that they've done, they're putting it in that resume. And you know what also is great about it reflectively is some students might say, hey, I need to do a little bit more. Or some are saying like, I'm doing a lot, but maybe I'm focusing just on one area, maybe I want to just expand a little bit more. So as we continue to go through this curriculum, we're always going to tie back to that. And I think again, it's really important to understand where you are now and like what your goals are, but where you've come from and where you want to get to. The ultimate goal really is for them to live a life of success, but be happy, right? And anything that you do. So all of these lessons have catered to that, and it's just really great to see it. I know it, it last year was kind of virtual, and to see them this year, I've been in the classroom with them now, like they're really into it, and they really like to interact with each other. And I think it's just a really great way for them to start talking about emotions and maybe talking about some, some tougher topics or maybe more topics that are important to them that they never shared. And they could do that individually by writing, or they could do that even in a group setting by just talking with peers. So again, it's just a way for them to just get, thinking about emotions, feelings, and what's important for them.
Great. So additionally, we did a needs assessment both at the middle school and high school level and at the elementary level. So at the middle and high school level, Mr. Bill Meyer, he held focus groups for the students and had questions that were designed to elicit specific feedback from students to find out about how they felt about the climate and culture of the school and their social-emotional well-being. So based upon feedback from the students, some positives that he heard was that there were many strong relationships with teachers that students felt that they had. Students felt that mental health is not a taboo topic and something that they can talk about if they need to. Students expressed that they enjoy having choice for their learning. They appreciate the option of challenging courses. And at the high school level, they also expressed that they did like the longer periods. Some areas for us to look at or further grow in would be that students did express that they have high levels of stress at certain points of the year. For high school, the college process is certainly a source of stress for many students. Students in the eighth grade really expressed how they'd like to access more support in school beginning in ninth grade, and we'll hear a little bit more about how we're going to support that transition. And also just a sense of belonging and connectedness across the board is something that we can look to, continue to improve upon.
Erin, for the access to more support, support, like what kind of support? Do they have a sense of what that meant?
Sure. So they were looking for more structured support when they came into ninth grade. So if you think about eighth graders, they're coming from that team approach. And then how can they feel better connected to the adults and the teachers when they enter into high school, and then also just other students as well?
Okay. Great.
And then at the elementary level, we also do a needs assessment. This is, Rosie helps us to do this. She actually elicits the feedback from the teachers at all grade levels. And based upon the input that she received, some positives are that students certainly are able to empathize towards others, they do show empathy towards one another, they are able to resolve peer conflicts effectively. The teachers feel that students do work well in teams and in cooperative groups. Some areas that we could focus on is to help provide teachers with more strategies for emotion regulation and self-control for students within the classroom. And then also that implementing the growth mindset can be challenging for students. So just looking for ways to improve upon that as well.
Erin, when are these needs assessments completed and how often? And when is, the information that you've provided us tonight is reflected of a needs assessment that was given, when?
Rosie, your, your needs assessment with the teachers was done like mid-winter or was it more in the fall?
It was, all of the data was in by November.
Okay. And then we ran the middle school, high school groups around the same time, I would say November or December.
I think they're probably a little bit more current. We finished ours, our freshman in February.
So for the high school and middle school groups, they were more current. So those have just finished probably within the last month to elicit that feedback and information.
And this, I'm assuming, this is the first year we've done this or we?
Yeah.
Okay.
For middle school and high school, but Rosie has done previous years where she has done the, yeah, so she, the teachers are very familiar with that. So Rosie, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's a yearly thing that you do provide for us?
Yes. And I'm even just so glad to see like the conflict resolution skills improve because that's how we, we saw that in the data, in the numbers. That was like the highest area of need for our kids. And in the one from this year, it was number four, so it was no longer number one. And some of those emotion regulation skills popped up higher as a higher area of need, like you saw in the, in the slide.
And the focus groups are multipurpose. So in looking at the climate, looking at relationships, we also were tasked with gathering information as part of the recommendations from the Race Inclusivity and Community Task Force. So we're actually going to hear more about what we've learned in terms of those efforts and the focus on belonging in the school. So when we come back to the board in June with an update on the work that we were charged with completing this year, you'll hear more about the findings from the focus groups and the learning from the students.
So just, there are many other steps we've taken this year to support social-emotional learning and also some thinking that we've done about what we want to do in the coming years. So one thing that we will be having at the end of this school year is a K to 12 Social Emotional Learning Institute. This will actually be run by Dr. Meyer, one of our newly appointed high school assistant principals. He was, as a staff developer, working with a PD team to put this institute together at the end of this year, open to all faculty. So we're excited about the two days of learning around that. And then we also started offering a youth mental health first aid course in collaboration with RYE Act and the RYE Youth Council. We have about 12 of our faculty trained thus far, and we plan on running this course in future semesters going forward. This year, we also started to work with our Culture Response to Sustaining Education Framework. That's the framework by, with, from New York State, really with a focus on creating an affirming environment for all of our students and a sense of belonging and connectedness. And then we just, we also offer ongoing professional learning and SEL. Every course catalog that we put out for every semester has SEL courses in it, and we have made this a priority. And there, and we also have focused on it during our Supertense Conference days. And the faculty is interested in it, they're excited about it, and they always appreciate those offerings. Looking at next year, we will be putting those DBT strategies, those from the Steps A curriculum that the students have in sixth grade, putting those in a 10th grade as well. So it's sort of a spiraling experience for them. So they're, they're reminded of the strategies they learned in sixth grade, and then they build upon them as they get older. And that'd be a tier one because, so all the students have access to that. We're very fortunate to be adding a school counselor at the elementary level for grades three through five. Rosie is fantastic, she's also stretched a little thin. So I know she's really excited about bringing on this additional counselor as well. That means more tier one lessons and expanding those push-in lessons, really K5.
Does Kelso have a buddy to?
So Kelso has a friend named Lily. Yes, we have Lily. But Kelso, yes, can go in K through five classrooms for those lessons, yes.
Can I just ask, will that be in addition to the work with the RYE Youth Council and Jess Ladato in third and fourth, or fourth and fifth? That will remain and this work will be added in?
Correct. We also are building a freshman transition program to really address that need of, as our students move from the middle school to the high school, making sure they feel connected to their new learning environment. And a big part of that is it's a peer program, so matching an older student with the freshman. And just really building a sense of community for our students when they first enter the high school. So we're excited about, about that program. Dr. Meyer is helping to lead that in, in partnership with our school counselors as well. You've heard us talk before about our therapeutic support services that we're starting next year. We're excited about that program. That will be run by an ESS clinician for grade six through 12. And that's just, what that gives us is it's one person overseeing students who may need that extra support to be successful in school. These can be students who are currently in our school or maybe perhaps coming back from an outside program. And really having that designated person to oversee that transition is going to be really key. And we also are looking at expanding our DBT training for all faculty because it is important that all faculty understand the language so they can use it in the classroom and help our students regulate their emotions whenever it's necessary. And then going forward for the 2023-24 school year, we are, we would like to expand our small group counseling at the middle school and high school level. So increase those tier two services through our counseling department. As we can bring Kelso up to fifth grade, we want to really make sure that we establish a K to five program, make sure it's fitting our needs. We want to do a further needs assessment for our students in K5 and make sure those lessons are really targeting what they need to be. And then we also are looking at expanding our counseling curriculum at the high school level. So as you saw that Managing Your Future course for 11th grade, what would that course, what could we build, can we design something similar to that for our ninth, 10th, and 12th graders that would, that would suit their needs?
And, and that was one of the, one of the great benefits of the schedule that we moved into was the ability to build counseling curriculum into the school day so that the counselors have windows of time built within the schedule to teach, and kids have those blocks in their schedule across the year for that instruction. So you'll hear lots more about how that works, but it's all based on every six days, every 12 days, there, lots of machinations in the schedule, but it's a great opportunity because of that new schedule that we moved to a few years ago.
So those are, those are our plans going forward and what we're thinking about right now. Is there any other questions?
Yeah, I actually just wanted to circle back for, for elementary for a second because unless I missed it, I think the RYE Youth Council only works with a third and fourth grade. So fifth grade, there isn't really a specific.
Right. It's a gap.
Thing that kind of happened. So this, and this, this school counselor is being proposed in this year's.
Well, it's in the adopted budget.
Yes. So, but I think the important piece is to understand that this is, you know, it's part of what we want to try and do with the, with the budget that is adopted.
Absolutely.
That's being put out to the community. And so, you know, being able to find some more continuity for those kids, especially, and I think there's been lots of discussion at various times about the transition between elementary and middle, and then obviously middle and high school, you were just talking about a few minutes ago. And having that continuity.
Yes.
Continue to happen.
Yes. Yeah, I think that really having a solid K5 SEL program in place is really going to set our students up for success. So I just want to be really thoughtful about it and make sure that it hits our kids' needs as much as possible.
Right. And, and something that's, that's unified is the wrong word, but like.
Consistent.
That has a particular, there's, there's coordinated goals.
Yes. Yes. Systematic approach to it.
Yes. Yes. That's a much better word. Thank you. Any other questions from?
I had a question. First of all, thank you for providing such a comprehensive overview. First of all, thank you for providing such a comprehensive overview. I think it's, we've talked about all these different pieces at different times, so it's nice to see them all in one place and how they're all connected. So I appreciate that. Just wanted to ask you about assessments that you talked about because as I look at this, there's, I know that there's a lot of pieces and there's a lot of dedicated resources that we're putting towards this. So just curious, how, how can we measure the effectiveness of these programs and how do we connect the needs assessments that you identified with how well are these programs addressing those needs?
That's a part we have to build out, I would say. I think that the focus groups that we did this year were a good start, but we need to be, think more about a comprehensive assessment program for this. There are a lot of different ways we can incorporate surveys, even with, you know, some of the elementary grades. They still would be able to do that and give their input and, you know, as far as like a rating scale and to see if they're, if students do build this feeling that they can maybe manage their emotions, maybe they feel like they're more in control of their emotions after going through some of these lessons. So I think that that's an absolute important part that we'll build into it going forward.
And I think there's the data too. So you look at conflict, you know, conflict data. You look at referrals for tier-two counseling, are you seeing fewer of those? And then it's, you know, talking to the families, but having a structured assessment protocol in place so that we're, you know, making database decisions as, as we have moved to instructionally, this is that same kind of area where we need to be.
You mentioned like, I think it was with ESS, like a student was discharged. Is that a way to measure that?
Absolutely. So you could also measure by the number of students who are accessing the tier-two and tier-three services. Obviously, you want that number to decrease. And if they do access it, is it, are they being discharged after a certain period of time and not just staying there? Right? You want them to be able to benefit from those resources and be able to be more, more independent in the skills.
And there are also, from CBC of Westchester, they also have a formula to look at this specifically so that you could know as a school district how their services are supporting your students. So they have a list of different data that they also could look at and help us to really look at that they've done in a variety of different schools that has really shown over time that you can show that your social emotional learning is really working. So whether that's behavior referrals, referrals to the CSE, the tier-three supports that students are accessing, attendance records, there's a variety of different things that you can put together that would really be able to show that these supports that we're putting in place are really supporting our students.
Great. Thank you.
Could you just spend a little time talking about how the current curriculum kind of maybe overtly brings in social media and technology? Just with regards to, I think, you know, the responsible decision-making, relationship skills, regulation, it's very different person to person versus sort of moving it to an online platform. And I don't know how much that overlaps or not, but I think it's something that we all understand is a major stress point for our children and our students. So just wondering how that overlaps with this curriculum, if at all.
Sure. We have digital citizenship lessons that we teach at the, at all levels. And they're included in the managing your future course, but they're included, we start as early as, you know, third, fourth, fifth grade in teaching students how to be socially responsible online.
So Charlie, that is part of managing your future, so?
Yes, that's going to be coming up. It's actually lesson eight for us, but I think that is a big concern, especially nowadays in the past decade, right? I mean, you kind of hide behind a screen and pretty much say anything. And you can read a lot of different things that are out there. So I think just making them aware of that and talking about that and bringing up that awareness is critical. It's so important. So we're definitely going to talk about that with them, you know, what's appropriate, what's not? What should you do if you hear something like this? How can you report that? All of that. So I think it is definitely a big piece of this and we do have it built into the curriculum.
But it is a deliberate part of our tech instruction. So Caitlin can certainly speak to this a bit, our coaches that go into the classrooms. The whole digital citizenship piece is pretty significant with the kids in the classroom. They really need to understand what their own digital footprint becomes as they become more active in social media platforms.
But, and it definitely just interconnects with this in my mind, you know, so sort of being collaborative, which I know you guys are, you know, with Caitlin's team, you know, can be important, especially as you're starting to build out that three to five, you know, fifth grade in RYE, a lot of kids end up getting a phone and that's young to figure these things out and really understand the impact. So I appreciate that work there. Thank you.
Well, and I agree with you, Kelsey. I think there's probably, when we talk about, when there's this, sort of this general concept of high stress, like trying to get a better granular understanding of, well, what are the components that make up the high stress? And I would venture, and I think there's plenty of studies out there that show the impact that social media has on, you know, all of those pieces for students, middle school, high school in particular.
Right.
As anybody whoever talks to me knows, that this is by far my most excited, passionate conversation when it comes to children. And so to see where we are headed makes me beyond excited because I do so passionately believe in this. And I think back to when Ms. Short came to Curriculum Council and presented an updated version of what is now the managing our futures, managing your future course, to see the evolution of what it was, what it was presented that night and what it truly lives now speaks to a great growth of feeling about the importance of SEL and what a cornerstone piece of what we now are believing to be a core piece of our curriculum is very exciting. And to Jen's point, when we look at the looking ahead, none of what, very few of what we have to be able to do in 2022, 23 happens unless our proposed budget is passed. So if you are someone like me who is totally geeks out about this, all of these services, these thoughts, this, the idea that what our children will actually be able to get exposed to with relatedness to their social and emotional health, so much of this is tied to making sure that this budget gets passed. And I want us to be very intentional in making sure that people are aware in our community that any growth in this area happens if this budget gets passed. That being said, the other thing, sorry, the other thing is this idea of the continuum of care from K to 12 is so intentional, just by what both of you presented with Kelso teaching about breathing to our managing your future course, starting every class talking about breathing. And somebody who doesn't breathe a lot, but yet who fully understands and appreciates because there is so much data now that in schools that actually mandate mindfulness and the reduction that it has had in referrals and suspensions, it's mind-blowing for somebody who doesn't breathe, just what breathing will do for you. You would think I would breathe more.
I suggest I take notes.
So, but it's just that idea that from K to 12, we're going to get that and give that to kids who are subscribing and saying, I'm high-stress, will be life-changing for these kids. And I just couldn't be more excited about the thoughtfulness that you all are doing with this, and I appreciate it.
Well, and just one other point to what you always say, Jane, is that the, when you are able to approach something with, in a mindful way or in a, in a way where your emotions are not ruling everything that is happening for you, you have a much greater ability and opportunity to engage in the learning that is in front of you. And so I think that's the other piece of this that, that is important to make sure it gets connected directly for, for parents and students is that this, this is all integral to your education as a whole and your life skills as a whole. Because once you leave high school, you have the rest of your life. And, and, and these skills are going to help you throughout all of that, whether it's college, career, family, whatever the case might be.
Exactly.
And I would just like, on behalf of all of the teachers and administrators, thank the board for supporting and adopting this budget because many of you have heard me, read my tweets and talked with me about the gaps in mental health supports in the New York State budget. If we even forgot where kids are right now and the incredible mental health needs that we're seeing among our students now, we would still need to be doing this work. And some of these things we've talked about over the last few years, wanting to get to it. But because you adopted this budget and we're moving forward with it, we're able to move forward. So I know I've talked to a lot of folks in the community that understand what the need is and are supporting it. And I think we're, you all heard me talk about baby steps a lot. We're on the, at the place where we're about to take a giant step forward for the good of our community and the good of our kids. And it's thanks to you moving this budget forward to the community on May 17th. So thank you.
Any other questions from anybody? No? Well, thank you all so much, everyone throughout the entire school system that contributes to this. For many years, we've been talking about how do we, how do we really integrate social emotional learning with, into our schools? And this is, this is like a real crystallization of all of that talk and thinking and trying to, to plan. So we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. So we will move on. So the next part of our agenda is the hearing of the public. And our first, we're going to kind of do this in two sections. So first, we will have a public hearing on the alternate veterans exemption modification in addition of the Cold War Veterans Exemption that has come before the board. The board is being asked to adopt the modification to increase the existing veterans exemptions to be consistent with Westchester County and our surrounding municipalities. In addition, the board is also being asked to expand the existing offered veterans exemptions to include those of the Cold War status. So I'll open up the public hearing to, for that. We will have a limit of three minutes to anyone who does want to come up and speak specifically to this veterans exemption. So seeing no one approaching, I will close that public hearing. And this will then appear on our next agenda for us to?
Yes. To approve. It'll be in the consent agenda.
Right. Okay. All right. Then we have our regular hearing of the public on non-agenda items. We welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you're representing an organization. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. So please understand that we may not respond publicly to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously and may need more time to process and research an issue. We will ensure questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff member or possibly answered at a future board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district personnel as these are protected under state and federal privacy laws. Please know we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to follow the appropriate administrative channels. As a reminder, the community may submit written comments at any time to the board by sending And seeing no one approaching to make any public comments, we will move on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Chris Repetto, seconded by Tom Stein. Before we go through, I'll just go through each section to see if there's any additional comments from the board or questions. So we have consent agenda general, fiscal construction, fiscal. Professional appointments, classified appointments, and special education. Okay. So can I get a final vote for the consent agenda? All those in favor? Six, nothing. So on our consent agenda tonight, we approved two gifts from Milton School. One is approval of $4,588 from the Milton School PTO to outfit the Milton School library terrace. And also, an approval of a $4,500 gift from the Milton School PTO to support the fifth grade play, fifth grade sandbox theater play. So we are always appreciative of those generous donations from our, our PTOs to help do things like the fifth grade play and outfit the library terrace. So thank you. We also have on our consent agenda a professional appointment for our secondary school assistant principal Christina Cannon, who is here in the audience tonight. So we're very excited for you to join.
Very excited to be here.
Wonderful.
She's been enjoying this so good.
Okay. You picked a good night. So welcome. We also have a, a professional retirement, and I actually am going to mention an additional retirement that we already accepted but did not have, were not able to talk about in our last meeting. So on tonight's agenda, we have the retirement of Ron Gazinski. It is with sadness that I announced the retirement of longtime RYE High School physical education teacher and coach, Ron Gazinski. Mr. Gazinski will retire at the end of June after 28 years working in the RYE City School District and 32 years in teaching overall. Mr. Gazinski joined the RYE City School District in 1994 as a physical education teacher and football coach at the high school. Shortly thereafter, he began teaching health classes as well. He was an early adopter of wellness, incorporating wellness concepts into his lessons in 1997 and preparing a wellness handbook for students that same year. This fits so well with tonight. As then assistant principal Wayne Mattis said, "The implementation of his wellness class for ninth graders is to be commended for being innovative and changing the concept of what physical education should be." Mr. Gazinski went on to become the longtime assistant coach to girls varsity outdoor track and field team and middle school modified assistant coach for indoor track. Through the years, he occasionally coached other teams, including the JV girls volleyball team and the varsity girls cross-country team. Before coming to RYE, Mr. Gazinski was a substitute physical education teacher at Nyack High School and Clarkstown High School North. Mr. Gazinski has a BA in public relations and political science from Marshall University, an MA in health education from Lehman College, and a certification in physical education from King's College. RYE High School principal Suzanne Kelly-Short said of him, "Having known Ron for 20 years now, I can genuinely say he's one of the most caring and compassionate people I know. He offers support to students and colleagues no matter the circumstances, and he's the first one to send a kind message just because. Ron has made a difference for so many students in this building, serving as a person of comfort and safety, and he will be missed." In his retirement letter, Mr. Gazinski said, "It is my hope that I have been a good role model and a positive influence on all of my students. I hope they learned a few things along the way about the importance of being physically fit as it relates to all aspects of health. I would like to thank the administration of the RYE City School District for their support over the course of my career. I will always value the friendships and relationships that I have built. I am fortunate to call many of these people lifelong friends. We wish Mr. Gazinski all the best in his retirement." And then on our previous agenda, we accepted the retirement of Michelle Johnson. It is with sadness that I announced the retirement of Michelle Johnson. It is with sadness that I announced the retirement of Michelle Johnson, the longtime Milton School Secretary to the Principal. Mrs. Johnson will retire at the end of June after 25 years working in the Rye City School District. She joined the Rye City School District in 1995 as the Secretary to the Principal at Rye High School. In 2001, she moved from Rye High School to become the Secretary to the Principal at Osborne School. In 2012, she left the Rye City School District only to return two years later in 2014 as the Secretary to the Milton School Principal. Mrs. Johnson has an executive secretarial diploma from the Wood School in New York City. Prior to coming to Rye, she held executive secretarial positions at several Westchester legal firms and corporations and worked as the Secretary to the School Principal at West Patent Elementary School in Bedford. Milton School Principal Annie Pykarski said of her, "Michelle is dedicated to the students, families, teachers, and staff at Milton School. You can, you could always count on Michelle to ask about your family, your latest vacation, or your children. She cares greatly about her colleagues and has built lasting relationships. It has been an honor to work alongside Michelle. She will be greatly missed." In her retirement letter, Mrs. Johnson said, "It is time for me to start a new chapter in my life. I look forward to spending more time with family and friends, volunteering, traveling, and may even go back to school to take a few classes. Thank you to the Rye City School District for these many fulfilling years. We wish Mrs. Johnson all the best in her retirement." I think that's the, there's nothing else to mention from the consent agenda. So we will move on to information and discussion where we have three policy, oh, two policies and a regulation.
Correct. Correct. Correct.
Okay. Sorry. So tonight you will see for our first review, we have Policy 5420, which is an update to our Student Health Services policy. There's an update, which is the removal of the language or religious related to a change that is now four years old, Dr. Byrne, probably? Related to the removal of religious exemptions as a, say, what now?
Four years.
Four years. Okay. Four years ago as related for a reason to not have vaccination was part of a religious exemption. The state made that change and so that's no longer in the language. So in practice, we have followed it. We believed we had made the changes to the policy somehow. It was, in the course of this, it was discovered it was still in there. So we're making it official, official this time. And then it is including the ability for our school nurses to be able to administer Narcan to students if they are believed at the time to be experiencing an overdose. This policy will only cover in-school time. So if there is an incident that takes place outside of the school time, this policy is not in effect as it only covers the ability of our nurses to be able to administer the Narcan.
Jane, what about like a sport event, sporting event? Is that school time or just, you're saying between eight and three?
Eight and three is related to.
Yeah, because the nurses aren't at the events, but, but any individual in the community can get trained in Narcan administration. St. Vincent's offers regular training and it's something that I know different, Rye Act has done a lot of work in getting more and more individuals in the community trained. But in terms of the policy, it's the nurses who are trained and have Narcan on hand at the schools.
And the EMS workers also have Narcan. So if they were ever to be called to an event, that's something that they would be able to administer. It's just our school nurses are the ones that are governed by this policy.
Okay.
Just a question. I'll preface this by saying in advance, I have zero issue with this change. But like the process of determining like what's the right list? Is this the full list? Are there other things that should be added? How did we decide when to, at opioid, like how is that, is there like, do we have medical advice or how does that get determined?
Well, it's certainly medical advice. It's also the availability of the training, so the Narcan training based on need that is being seen across schools in the region and across the country. It's an unfortunate need.
Yeah.
And having the availability to get the staff, to get the nurses trained and, and ready to provide this level of care if needed. So it's just a practical shift.
And it was also noted by Tracy Burnett, our head nurse, in that lots of the drugs that are being seen in the county are being laced. And so while students may not necessarily be ingesting the, not intentionally ingesting something, it's because it's being laced that that's then causing a greater need even for Narcan training and availability.
The fentanyl lacing and.
Yeah. Now, trust me, I've got no question about opioid being added. If anything, it's like, why wasn't it added a long time ago? But more like, just is there anything else that like someone, like maybe we, you know, it may just be extremely rare, but, but wouldn't want like someone to not get treated with something simply because it's not on a policy list? Like, I mean, trying to think of what that could be with, I mean, like, you know.
We do look at the health.
Well, we do have defibrillators though in the district.
We do, we do have defibrillators all over the place, but we do look at the health policies regularly as part of our evaluation process. And anytime that we see that there is an intervention that makes sense for us, having the benefit of a Director of Health Services in Tracy enables us to immediately move forward with the professional learning and, and training that's necessary and the changes to policy.
Okay. So like something like a defibrillator, we don't feel it needs to be listed here for people to use it?
No.
Right. I think if, I think if you looked at the management of life-threatening allergies, you know, there's going to be, that's going to, it seems to me, cover.
Well, we do have an, we do have an AED policy. So the defibrillators have their own standalone policy.
Got it. Great.
Jane, the only other thing I think Tracy noted that people might, you know, who may not be, understand Narcan and when or when you would not use it is that if it were administered and somebody was not, if their symptoms were not actually from an opioid overdose, that there are no sort of negative side effects from that administration. So it's sort of a, the risk reward is very skewed to the positive.
Yes, for sure. And so then there is an accompanied regulation that the district will use when implementing this policy. Okay. All right. And then moving on, so as with all the policies here for our first review tonight, please take a look. Any questions or comments, please make sure to send them along. The next policy you'll see here is Policy 7100. It is a facilities planning policy. So with this policy, what this policy is doing is it's taking an existing policy 7800 and a current existing policy 7100 and combining them together to clarify and take care of both of those policies, again, in our effort to streamline and make things neat and tidy. So take a look at it. The closing of facilities, that additional section is related to the 7800 policy. So that's where you will see it.
And that's updating some policies from the late 90s. So we're making progress with the policy.
We are scratching and clawing our way to the 2000s. One day, we're going to get there before we get to 2050.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Please do.
So typically, we do a building condition survey every.
Five years.
Five years. So in this, it sounds like there will be a continual annual update to that instead of waiting the five years? Is that correct?
Yes. So what this policy is doing is it's taking our current practice and actually putting it into the policy. So every, as you'll see the line in, above that, it says that they will prepare a five-year capital assessment preservation plan and that we do an annual update to our building condition survey. So that's something we currently are doing and we are codifying it in our current policy.
Okay. So that was really my question is that, is this something that's new or are we already doing it and we're just putting it into language?
It's fairly new and yes, we are putting it into our policy because of the practice that we've implemented with success and we believe is necessary.
Right. And then the, the only other piece that I had a question about was where it talks about the board may create an advisory committee representing all groups. So is this different from what we would consider the facilities committee or?
Well, so that's not new language, that's existing language. So that representing all groups, my, my thought would be that this would be the existing facilities committee and because it's already current practice in our policy, that yes, that would be what it alludes to.
But, but it also gives the ability for the board to form ad hoc committees on a very specific facility issue that we think needs to be addressed.
Okay. That was, that was my only questions. Thank you.
Great. So take a look at those, that as well, and please, any feedback. In addition, I just do want to provide an update to the community. At the last meeting, we had some comments and we said that as a policy committee, we would look at the lighting policy. So the policy committee did meet. We reviewed the lighting, the field lighting use policy. As a result of that meeting, we determined that there had been a past practice in place for the last two, two and a half years and, which was allowing our youth organization, some of our youth sports organizations to be able to practice on the field one night a week from 7:30 to 8:30. Even though this is not currently in agreement with our current policy, we were able to reach out to concerned citizens and neighbors who had raised some concerns related to this past practice. And we were able to come to an agreement to continue with the agreed-upon practice schedule for these youth organizations so that they will continue to be able to use the field as scheduled from now until April 16th on Wednesdays from 7:30 to 8:30. And what we will do as the policy dictates is that we will convene a group of, as the policy, I believe, calls them proponents and opponents. And one of the things we'll do is change that terminology. But we will convene a group of community members who come from different, understand different ends of the spectrum on this issue and have conversations to try to see what changes can be made to the policy to continue to allow student, community members in youth organizations, to allow them more opportunity to use the field, but also maintain the respectful relationship that the district has had with surrounding community members of the field and of the lights. We will begin to have those meetings and conversations shortly through the policy committee. Once we've had those meetings, we'll be able to look at updates to the policy, which subsequently will follow our typical normal policy review, which will come to the board for a first read and a second read as well, which will also provide opportunity for comments from the public as well as from community and board members. So any questions about that? Okay.
All right. Thank you. Any communications to and from the board? Community meetings? Nope. Nothing? Okay. So then the board actually will be adjourning into executive session this evening to discuss, to review a legal matter, but we do want to motion to adjourn the public session. So can I have a motion to adjourn our public session? Chris Repetto, seconded by Tom Stein. All those in favor? Six, nothing. So we will not be coming back out into public session after the executive session. So thank you all for joining us. Our next meeting is April, Tuesday, April 19th, where we'll discuss the Haskins Lab work. And we wish you all a very happy and safe spring break. Good night.